June 3rd zoning board of adjustment meeting is Monday, June 3rd, 2024, and it is 1:30 PM, 1:31 PM. First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone again, and we have a larger agenda today than usual. We didn't have a meeting in May. I'm curious, are y'all here on each individual agenda item? Or is there a group of y'all here for one agenda item?
I'm the neighbor.
Which ones are neighbors, sir? I'm sorry.
Next to him.
Okay, there's three. That's over here, there's a group. Are y'all separate? The four, four one group?
All separate.
All separate? So really, it's not going to make a difference, is it? We all join together now and hold hands, we can get this over with pretty quick, right? You know what I mean? Anyhow, well, here we go, folks. It's gonna be a long one. Gonna call the meeting to order, and we have established there's a quorum of six today. So we do have a quorum. That is on item number one. Item number two is we're gonna take review and any action on April's minutes, April the 9th, 2024.
Move approval.
Have moved to approve, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously.
Could I ask a question or make a suggestion before we get started?
Sure, sure.
So there are five of these on here that the city is gonna recommend to approve. Is there a way that we can just bulk approve those and not go through the whole process?
No.
Okay.
Because they're independent.
Yeah, we have told a public hearing by statute, so.
I figured it was too good to be true.
Good question, though. I'd have voted for that one myself. Can we vote on that, Brandon? All right, here we go. Item number three, ZBA 23-25, 1746 Cordell Drive, single member district, number two, Tom Thompson. A request for approval of a variance from section 501 of zoning ordinance to allow for a zero-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required 25-foot. Ms. Bailey, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You will recognize this one. It came before you, and I believe it was October or November of last year. And at that time, it was one of a number of carports that were coming forward. And so we tabled them and took a look at extending the overlay district. That has been accomplished. But this one in particular, it still has a problem and is requesting a variance. He built the carport at the front property line, and so he's five foot from that five-foot setback. He needs a variance of five feet. We looked at everything else on the carport because the roof line has a slight projection that is straight and not part of the roof pitch. We did not have a problem with the fact that it is a flat roof. It is just the five-foot setback from the front property line. We sent out 25 notifications, and in fact, we received a number that support the applicant's request. We did not get any in opposition. These are some pictures of that. And so in this case, looking at the analysis, the applicant lists his special circumstances due to the fact that the hail occurs and it damages the truck significantly. The front yard setback in the town used to be 25 feet, as I indicated. It has now been down to five feet for the overlay district, but it still requires a variance to approve the zero. Staff is recommending still denial because it is that five-foot that does not meet the new ordinance. And in staff's mind, that is a very significant difference, that zero front yard. But again, it is in the front overlay zone. And with that, are there any questions?
I have one quick one. So if you deny it, you're gonna make him tear it down?
If we didn't, if you deny it, what we're gonna do is have to work out something. But yes, he has to set it back to five feet if he does not get a variance.
And when?
Yes, ma'am.
When was the structure built?
I believe, I'll let the applicant answer that, but I believe around 20, or 2019, but I don't, I'm not sure.
It's been up several years.
It's been up a while, yes.
I believe it was 2023, based on the data that we found, yes, without a permit.
I knew I had two of them, but.
And this is the same area we talked about before that only so many houses didn't have that zoning?
Yes, it is. It is an area that we reached out and pulled into the overlay district, yes.
What is the right-of-way? How much right-of-way is there from the back of the curb to the property pin?
I believe it's seven feet, Gary. Six or seven feet.
It's a little more than usual, isn't it?
No, it's, that's about average.
Yeah, mine are four-sixths on subdivisions. So you're saying that's seven feet back to the?
Six, six feet, seven feet, yes.
I saw seven-six on one of the slides there. I didn't stop you to see what that meant. Go back a few slides.
Yeah, it depends, and that, I believe, was to the posts.
To the post, okay.
From the, yes.
So you have a right-of-way of six, and to the post was seven-six. So, all right, am I doing the math right?
And the post is on the end? There's no overhang?
The, there's a slide over to hang, yes. It's set in.
It's a good-looking structure, by this picture.
I need one.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any more questions?
I got a question.
You said there was, was there letters mailed out to the neighbors and stuff on it?
Yes.
And was there any opposing people?
No, sir, there was not.
Nobody opposed it?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions? Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open public comment. I'm gonna ask for public comment. Anybody here that wants to? Yes, sir. Come up and state your name, please, for the record? Yes, sir.
My name's Gary Lacy, and I've had this property for quite a while. And I didn't have the carport on there. The garage built onto the house is too small for the pickup, and they had built-in cabinet stuff in there. So even if I tore all those out, I still couldn't cover the pickup. And I ruined one pickup on the hailstorm. So when I bought a new one, then I went in and put this in, and this was put in, I believe it was in 2018, when I put it up. And I have letters from people all in the, in those, in that area. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. And then I have some neighbors back here that'll speak for it also, but you can see the letters.
Oh, yes, sir.
There's nobody in there that has any complaints with it? They think it's a?
No, it's good-looking. I like, you built it yourself, huh?
Sir, yes, sir.
You built it yourself?
Yes.
Nice job. You hiring out?
Huh? No. I've had two heart surgeries and heart attacks and two back surgeries since then, so not for hiring anymore.
And we can blame it on building the carport, the heart stuff, and it's a hardship, right? Oh, I'm sorry, I digressed there.
That's fine.
Yeah, glad you're still above ground, still with us.
Yes, sir.
But this is minor compared to having heart surgery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mine, I, they had to pop me twice. I mean, get this back, but, but that's why, when the mayor, when I meet somebody and they say, "How you doing today?" I said, "I'm in paradise, man."
Yeah.
I said, "I'm walking on top of the ground instead of being put under it."
Could I ask you a question?
Go ahead, sir.
With all due respect to you, I just want to ask you, why did you not apply for a permit?
See, this is where I made my first mistake.
Okay.
I called, I made a call, and I stated this in the last meeting I was there. I made a call. I talked to a lady. I don't know, I didn't get her name, I didn't get her position, and I asked her, I told her where I lived and what I was gonna build a carport. I wanted to build a carport. And she goes, "Are you gonna do it yourself? Are you gonna have a construction company do it?" I said, "I'm gonna do it. You don't need one." And I just took it at that. And I, I don't know if she's even here or what her name was, and I didn't write it down. That was my mistake. And that's kicked me in the butt on that one.
So?
So I just built it.
So when, while you were building it, nobody went by?
Nobody said, nobody said, nobody?
Red flagged you, red tagged you or anything?
Nobody, I didn't get, nobody had said a word about that carport until I got the first letter on the first meeting here. I got a knock on my door.
This was in 18, 2018?
2018 or 19 in there. Everybody seen?
Yeah, we received a complaint last fall, and so they went out, and that's, that's when the city enacted enforcement. We don't have staff that just goes out and look for violations, but we had a person call in. Our current imaging shows that in 2023, that structure was not there. Now, that's our current imaging, but that doesn't mean it wasn't there, it's just our imaging doesn't show it.
I think if you look, if y'all read the letters, you can see that there's total support, not just right there on that, I mean, from the whole area, when they drive by, because I'm on my corner lot, and people drive by it all the time. I think people stop and tell me that the structure is very nicely built, don't know who did it, and I told them I did, and they said, "I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I know I'm deaf, too, so I'm sorry." But I don't think it constructs any view anywhere for anybody driving, and if I, if I have to tear it down, I guess I gotta tear it down. I mean, I'm gonna be upset because the pickup's sitting there and it's gonna get killed again. But I.
What's the distance between the post closest to the street and the middle post? There, do you know approximately?
From the, from the last post to the street, it's about five and a half foot. I've got it on this. See if I got it on this.
That's metal?
Uh-huh.
It's metal, metal, uh, parlorings and all of it?
And I filled out this, I had this, I filled it out the last time when I got it, but they told me just to keep it until I figured out what was going on. But I tried to do it right, not throw something up there that's a piece of trash or would look bad or cause anybody harm or be a damage to the neighborhood, because if, and if you saw some of the ways that they park cars in their driveway, in their front yards and side yards, now they can't get on mine because I gotta, but that's what I got. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy.
Thank you, sir.
Need more public comment on this agenda item? Hello.
Hello. My name's Doug Folkrad, and I live Catty Corner on 1801 Louise Drive. It's, when, it's the older section. When we moved in, we've lived there for 20 years. When we moved in there, that whole area was nothing but mesquite trees. And then the development came in, and Gary's is the best-looking lot in the whole area. He's got beautiful, he put artificial turf in, which I'd love to have his yard, but it'd be a shame to see it torn down. And if you were to drive the neighborhood, the reason he is, this has been brought up, I'm sure, is because his next-door neighbor, he's the one that filed the complaint, and he doesn't like him. I know he doesn't. But if it wasn't for that, he wouldn't be here. If you had to drive the neighborhood, there are so many that I'm sure have not gotten a permit because they, they basically, close, some of them are closer to the street than his is, and theirs hasn't been, had to be torn down. But I just wanted to say that I envy his place, and I'm looking forward to putting a carport in, but mine is not facing the front of the house. Mine's on Van Buren, which my garage goes in the side of the house, which I know, they told me when I was gonna put one up, that since it's not in the front of the house, there was no problem putting one up. I just wanted to say that, like I said, I envy him.
Thank you. And if you do yours, get a permit.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Any more public comment? There being? Okay, so you support?
Yes, I support.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So just as a reminder to the board?
I get in trouble all the time.
No, you're fine.
Yeah.
As a reminder to the board, and especially since we have a new member, just Ramirez, since this is one that's, staff has recommended denial, you don't have their findings and their staff report or the presentation to rely on for granting a variance. So to grant the variance, you need to make a finding on the record of why this is a hardship and the reasons for granting it.
And?
Thank you, Brandon.
I want to clarify, from the planning standpoint, we're not opposed to the carport, the shape, design, color, anything like that. It's just we did do the open structure overlay. The open structure overlay says you either have to be 10 feet back of curb or five feet from the right-of-way. In this case, he's built right up to the right-of-way, and he's not quite 10 feet behind curb. So that, that's what our objection is to, the rule is. And we don't find a reason why we would allow that to go forward, to have that, I'm gonna say roughly three feet, maybe four feet, if it's six feet to seven feet from back of curb.
Don't even give a senior citizen discount on that? What was the, what was the setback before?
When you say the setback before?
On the coverlays and other zones and other areas from the curb?
If they're not in the open structure overlay, they are a 25-foot front yard setback.
Yes, sir.
If you're in the open structure overlay, you can be within five feet of the right-of-way in your, in your front yard, or 10 feet from back of curb, as long as you don't encroach into the right-of-way. So if he had a really wide right-of-way, but he was 10, built all the way up to his property line, and that right-of-way was 10 feet, he would be okay.
Right, okay.
And the reason is it's the shy distance for vehicle traffic. Again, we know this is a neighborhood, and it is a local street. We understand that, is it is not at the apex of the intersection, but it's, you know, back behind the intersection, but that is, that's a standard through all communities of trying to keep private property from being damaged from people going up and down and being very that close to the right-of-way, particularly when you come in and do water lines, sewer lines, Southern Link, or any of the other third-party utility companies that have to get into the right-of-way, that have legal right to be there.
And that's to the post? That's not the count, the overhang? You're right? Is that correct?
I think that's what Ms. Bailey said. It doesn't look like there's a significant overhang, if, to me, from my looking at it from that, I have not been, I've driven by that site, but I've never actually stopped at that site as we were doing the survey out there. It doesn't look like there's a significant overhang right now.
But it wouldn't be, the measurements, though, would be to the post?
Yes, to that vertical member.
The overhang could actually go over the right-of-way?
It can't go over the right-of-way, but it can go up to the right-of-way.
Up to the right-of-way, okay, okay. But cannot go over the right, an overhang cannot go over the right-of-way, okay.
So essentially, we could move those back by three feet?
I mean, in honesty, I know we're talking about easements or the right-of-way and things like that, but with it being in the driveway, I don't foresee Southern Link and them having, I mean, they'll go right underneath that, so. They would have to go underneath it regardless because the driveway is there, whether it had a cover or not.
Did I close public comment?
No.
Yes, more public?
Is the shorter driveway than most of us do?
You have to come to the mic, sorry.
And state your name.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My name's Mary Folkrad. I live across the street from Gary. I believe Gary's driveway is shorter than most of the driveways in our neighborhood because where he's at, he's also on a part of a cul-de-sac. So he's the first house there, but he's kind of got a shorter driveway than most of us do. And Southern Link has all their stuff kitty corridor for most. They are actually on our property, so, and they've tore everything up over there, but it's across the street, they tore everything up.
Thank you.
They're in the right-of-way.
I think the special exception, the special exceptions, his truck doesn't fit in that Yeah. See, look, right there, curves into that, so he's already losing a little bit of that
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
How much big, how much bigger is a carport than the truck?
It looks like it's pretty even.
It's pretty even, right?
So even if you, even if they found somewhere in the middle where they had to move the post back, it's still not gonna cover the vehicle?
Yeah.
I personally think it's not.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, there's.
And that's on the short bed.
Uh-huh. Extra short bed.
So, when they did the amnesty out there in 95, it says, "Be setback at least five feet from the curb or the edge of the pavement on adjoining street." So you're now, now you're saying it's 10, 10 foot?
25, 25.
Yes, our current ordinance reads that way for the open structure, and that, that gave the amnesty, means that those were, had structures that were previously existing before any of the rules came in.
So?
And that's certainly not the case on this one.
Which rules? Now, what year?
1995.
Yeah, they had?
So if there is an existing carport pre-1995?
Okay.
They would have those, those kind of grandfathered rules. Then the open structure overlay has now come in that we, city council approved for this area to allow carports within the 25-foot setback.
I was trying to find, I thought I had them, the new rules from the state that came into effect from the?
And Chairman, they are asking you in the back to speak into the microphone, sorry.
I'm gonna take this one away from you. Just that one.
This, this new mandates that came out of the legislature last year for carports?
Would be, I think, yes, I think that would have been last year, and when you say new mandates for carports, what?
They had, they had money values in it and all that, all that kind of stuff. I thought I had a copy of them, is what I thought, but.
I don't think that was carport-specific. I think in some instances, the financial decision, or the cost can be a decision, and maybe Brandon has a little bit more information on that for us.
So, in determining that there's a hardship, some of the factors that you could consider is the financial cost of compliance is greater than 50% of the appraised value of the structure as shown on the most recent appraisal roll certified by the assessor with the municipality. I don't think this would apply, but compliance would result in a loss to the lot on which the structure is located of at least 25% of the area on which development may physically occur. I don't think we're talking about any kind of floor area ratio or anything. Compliance would result in the structure not being in compliance with a requirement of municipal ordinance, building code, or other requirement. So I guess by complying with the setbacks here, that would make them not in compliance with others, some building code requirement.
But the first one you said is the financial cost of?
Yeah, of the structure, cost of compliance is greater than 50% of the appraised value of the structure. So I don't know if we have a value for that carport, or if there's any evidence on what
I'd like to make a motion if?
Let me run down here, let's, I gotta, we're done with the public comment? I need to close public comment, and board commentary asked the board to talk. Do y'all have any questions and want to speak to anything?
If there's no questions, then I'd like?
Mr. Lauster wants to make a motion?
I agree that the carport be approved. It's a nice-looking carport, there's plenty of room between there and the street. It's already up. I think the hardship, to your, your point, would be having to tear it down. Nobody's in opposition to it around them, so I think he should be approved.
Mr. Lauster, so the hardship has to be unique to the property itself, the fact that?
I think it is, there's, there's no more room for that truck, it's parked against his garage.
So I think, I think we're gonna go back and use that first one, you said, the financial cost.
A truck is not unique to property, it's some kind of geographic.
So I made my motion, you telling me I can't make that motion?
I'm telling you, your motion isn't legally supported by the statute and the ordinance, so you're welcome to make it, I'm just telling you that it would be subject to appeal by district court, and if you don't have findings of hardship that meet the statute, it could be?
Well, we weren't provided with said findings.
Can we utilize the?
They're in the ordinance.
Structure greater than 50%?
The criteria is in the ordinance, so what my point was earlier was that staff is recommending denial, so they didn't make findings on that, they said it didn't meet that criteria. So that's why the board would need to make those findings.
Well, this got tabled once already, right?
Right.
I stand by my motion.
I will second it. I think the financial cost of the structure, like you stated, is greater than 50% of that, and we'll utilize that.
Okay.
There was no other findings to go by, so.
Any more discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll take a vote. All in favor for what you said?
Approval.
Mr. Lauster's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That being five yays and one nay, what does that do?
It doesn't pass.
It does not pass.
Mr. Lacy, I apologize for the?
We'll have staff visit with you afterwards, sir. We'll have staff visit with you. The caseworker on this case will give you a call, let you know what the next steps could be.
Well, the chief building officials here now, I have some questions from a structural standpoint, can we do that?
Well, that's not on the agenda to talk about, but I apologize, Chairman, but.
I lost my agenda, I gotta, can't.
I understand, sir. But there, there are some remedies, I mean, there are some options, and I do believe that Sherri Bailey can work that out along with the applicant, as well as the building official, they can talk to them about if there, if he needs to cut it back a certain distance, how that would work.
Okay. I believe we'll get it worked, they'll get it worked out for you, and hopefully not so costly fashion. I think I see some things on there that might work. All right. All right, item number four, ZBA twenty-four dash twelve, twenty-three oh two Guadalupe Street, single member district number four, Lucy Gonzalez, a request for approval of a variance from section four oh six point four of the zoning ordinance to allow for a new short-term rental at a distance of two hundred and ninety-seven feet from an existing short-term rental in lieu of the required five hundred. Mr. Reed, your own.
Thank you, Austin Reed Planner. So this comes to you out of the central neighborhood. We are in district four. Lucy Gonzalez is a district. This is an RS one zoned lot, and the request is for, like you said, approval of a short-term rental at a distance of two hundred and ninety-seven feet, with that minimum, of course, being the five hundred feet. So we did mail out twenty-six notifications. We received one in favor over the weekend, and we do have one in opposition. They did not say anything on the response, just that they were opposed. This is sort of a graphic showing you the distance between the two. The existing short-term rentals off of San Antonio streets. They did recently just renew this past month, meaning they are active until at least June of next year. Both of these lots are RS one zoned, meaning that the five hundred foot rule does apply. Ultimately, as is the case with a lot of the other short-term rental distance variances, we weren't necessarily able to find that all the criteria for granting variance can be met. With that, we are recommending denial, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Y'all recommended denial?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Reed?
Just to be on the record and state when the applicant applied or applied for the permit, was that back when the systems were down and didn't have the footage, or was that afterwards?
When the, like when the maps weren't necessarily up to date. The application was only received probably a month or two ago, so I believe that, yeah. I think they were fully informed, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any more question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Open for public comment? Welcome. State your name, please, for the record.
My name is Carolina Jedha Flores, and I'm the owner of that property. So, um, thank you for listening. This property I purchased back in October twenty twenty-three. And similar to the other gentleman, I've had already been working with the city with two other SDRs, so I knew the process. So when this property became available, it was a flip home from a local family that was now wanting to sell, and it's beautiful. I went to the city and I asked, well, this is a situation, there's another, they did the measurement and they said three hundred feet, and they said, well, you know, there's some new comments and new rules coming ahead, and we might be able to get that for three hundred feet, but there's still another meeting coming up. We'll wait and see. So we helped, then my real estate agent actually called the city and inquired, and she was giving same information, like it, it might come up. It might be something that you guys will be able to do, so we went ahead and purchased a property. Every four to two weeks, we would call and check online, try to see if this has passed or not. So we had been waiting and waiting. It was not until April sixteen that we were here at the meeting with the mayor present, where it was clarified to SDR owners that this was not going to be the case, not three hundred feet. It's going to be five hundred feet. So the next day, we went back to the city and said, what can we do about this? This is a property that we had that was purchased with the intent to be an SDR. And they said, go ahead and apply for the variance of distance. And we sure enough did, and that's all documented via emails. This was prior to the vote coming ahead and the law actually being settled and changed. So I am here asking for an exception because I think as SDR owners, there is some out there that are not really interested on following the rules. And there are some of us who have been trying to follow the rules. And I think, and I understand every time I go to the city, I feel the process is better just getting, uh, you know, to the people that I need to talk to or the questions that need to be answered. But I understand how it's also very new for the city. It's also new for us. So it was a new, unique situation, and that's, that's the SDR that I have, so. Now, if I, I understand there was also comments about the schools. We definitely have not been looking at purchasing any type of properties close to a school. But this specific SDR is not really causing any harm by the, by being less than five hundred feet from the other, um, SDR. Yes.
So what are you using the property for now?
It's an SDR.
Oh.
So, yes, sir, so we approached the city and, uh, of course, the mayor said we want everybody to be as legal as to the current rules, pay our state taxes, our local taxes, had our inspection. So it's a whole, we've done everything as far as we've been told. And there's sometimes new things that arise, they're like, oh, you're missing this or that, but we try to keep up. Now, I've, I've been here, and especially with the last meeting, uh, there was a gentleman that stood up, and he couldn't even finish his talk, and I don't know if you guys were present or not. So it's, it's, it's been interesting. It's been an interesting experience for SDR owners on how things and regulations have been changing. And I understand there needs to be rules and we need to follow them to keep, you know, our, our city in order and compliance, but it's just, um, you know, it, it seems like there's truly a pushback into this type of business here locally. We are not in Austin or Manhattan. It's San Angelo. So as an SDR owner, I have two other properties that are active and have been acting for the last year and a half in compliance with all of the city's rules. This, this, this type of properties are an opportunity for visiting families, especially, we had guests that bring elderly grandparents that are visiting students at ASU where it would be too expensive to stay in a hotel or just, you know, the fact you're an elderly couple, they need to have a kitchen. They need to have a bathroom. They need to have maybe a living room, a sofa to sit down. So, um, SDRs, I don't think are all that bad as it's been portrayed multiple times by other people. I think it's an opportunity that, uh, for, for guests to San Angelo to enjoy and, and inhabit.
Very good. Good candor. Thank you. Now, pardon me, I'm having a senior moment. How did, how did you, how were you already operating under an SDR if you didn't have the permit before? I'm, I'm lost on that one.
So that's been, and, and again, this last time we went to the city, they were asking the same situation. That has not been a hundred percent clear to us.
I see.
We know there are SDRs that are operating, had not even approached, they're not paying any taxes versus some of us that are being told, okay, you can operate, but do you need to have a permit? Or do you need to be like approved first? We don't know. We, we've asked. Mistake, what number one was, when I called and I went over there, I didn't ask for names. But this has been going on for a year and a half.
Did you fill out any paperwork when you originally went?
Yes, ma'am, we have. Yes, ma'am, for, for, uh, again, for the two active that had been going on for, well, the Oxford, yes, for a year and a half. The other one down Colorado has been active since September, we have. And then this one came and we had been waiting to know what would happen. And it was not until that April meeting that the mayor said, she encouraged, come out. Okay, let's get this on the rules that we decided to go ahead and do this.
But you were operating it as an SDR without having the permit, I guess?
We were waiting, yes.
With or without the city's approval? I know you said you had talked to them and they said to continue to do that.
We were in process. I don't, I don't have the final, like with the other SDRs, it's a whole process, and you finally get a license or a paper. We're still on that process.
So, Aaron and Brandon, after we vote on this, then it goes to the planning department, is that correct? Planning commission?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, since she did her application before the new rules took effect, saying that the distance isn't variable, she can still get a grant, uh, variance here. But then if she does, then yes, it goes to planning commission to approve the conditional use. That'll give them the authority to actually operate.
But that's not really happening right now, is it, though? Most of them are, or yet all of them are pretty much all being declined because they're not in that five hundred foot rule. Yes.
I would say the majority are being approved at planning commission. Are, are you talking about ones that have received a variance here and then gone?
So if we were to approve it and then she go to planning, it's my understanding that a majority of those are being declined at planning.
There were some denied, yes. I don't know if it was the majority.
I wouldn't say it was the majority. I, I think we've done maybe five distance variances, but I, I'm pretty sure the majority, now that's a small number, have actually been approved by conditional use.
So how'd you, how'd they find out you had an SDR there? They just went in there and applied and that triggered it?
No, I, I, I approached the city.
Yeah, and you, you approached them, uh, how, how long ago on this?
October.
Of last year?
Yes, sir.
For this property, for this property?
Yes, I, I, I've been the owner since October, so that's when I decided to go ahead and purchase.
And you had other properties that you were operating as an SDR?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And all the permission?
Going through the whole process, yes, sir.
You had those properties before this one?
Yes. A few months before. I had-
So you knew the procedure?
Correct.
And they told you last year in October to wait?
They didn't say wait. They said it might be something that we'll go ahead and approve because it was still up in the air whether this was gonna change or not.
And I had heard that too. And everyone, we, that's, we were all kind of on that same-
And we were calling, and we were, again, we're trying to do our best to keep compliance, and it's, it's, it's a process and, um.
But you went ahead and bought the property not knowing you'd get this, I guess?
Right.
So.
So, like-
What was your backup plan if you got this, didn't get it approved? Do you have a backup plan? Use it as a rental or move into it or?
Well, it's a rental, right. It's just a short term.
Short term, yeah.
Yeah, well, I thought it would, I thought it would be approved because it didn't make a lot of sense not to. Um, unless it was, you know, close to a school, then that's why, we, we were offered properties that had been newly remodeled close to schools, and we said, no, we passed on those opportunities. It makes sense to me, but it doesn't make sense with the distance.
There's other, there's other properties within that five hundred feet. You, you knew that at the time, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, and I went to the city and I sat, and they did the map, and they, we saw three hundred feet, and they, and they told us, well, you know, there's, there's some rules coming up that are gonna change. So we went ahead and purchased under that understanding. It was not something that I just, I went to the city before even, and then my real estate agent made a second call to make sure that this information was correct, and she was given the same information.
Who'd you talk to? You don't remember?
That's my mistake. It's similar to the other person. I haven't asked for names.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more public comment?
Jamal Shumpert, single member district number three. What was surprising from this woman's testimony is that the staff, who is directed by the board and the city council, was looking for ways to subvert the five hundred foot ordinance. That, I think, is not what they was there for. It's kind of interesting listening to this because now I know why so much effort was put into just the five hundred foot ordinance while enforcement was not taken care of or even looked at. There is some funny things going on here that I don't think may even be legal. I'm not sure y'all were supposed to tell her, almost guarantee her, that she would get that knowing that there was an ordinance against it. I don't know what to say. Thank you.
Well, that's subjective. That's called subjective. So, uh, objectivity is the ordinance. Any more ques, any more public comment? There being none, I'll close public comment. All right, board, talk to me.
I got a question. Who's got the detail on the city council meeting where they talked about the five hundred foot?
Yep, I see. Jump on in.
So the five hundred foot was established when SDRs were first brought to San Angelo. They just redid the ordinance for everything. The five hundred foot remained in there, and that's what they voted on, and that's what's been approved.
So that just happened, right, in April?
Yes.
But there was some miss, nobody at, at that point in time when we, six months ago, I guess?
Yes, during October and in the beginning meetings, with discussions with planning commission, there were different proposals that had brought forward. One of the proposals was to remove the five hundred foot. That was reinforced by city council through their meetings in the spring of the year or late winter of, no, they wanted to re, keep that in there and bring it forward as, uh, the new rules that it would not be variable. So the, but this applicant applied under the old rules so that, that distance, she could apply for a variance for that distance.
Possible. What changed under the new rules?
They, they maintained the five hundred foot buffer from SDR to SDR. They included a new buffer around public, well, I shouldn't say public schools, schools. They could be public or private, uh, and so they increased, uh, they added more buffers, if you will. We did remove the conditional use requirement from the commercial districts, where before every zoning district had to have one. So the only zoning districts that require a commercial, excuse me, the only zoning districts that require a conditional use are the RS one, RS two, RS three, and the ranch and estate. Those are the ones that also have the buffer boundaries in them. And that is the intent from our council and election, uh, elected group is to limit the density in our single-family residential areas that are still acting like single-family residential areas and encourage growth in our commercial areas with allowing them by right.
We had hoped there would be wiggle room on that five hundred feet, and there wasn't.
Correct. They actually wrote into the ordinance that it was not variable. The other, I would say, improvements is we've improved the process so they come in. We require them to come in now. We're not talking over the phone. We're coming in. We're sitting down. We're doing the inspections first. Our building permits and inspection team is doing the inspections first before they ever come forward for a conditional use. And so they're doing all of that first to make sure they pass all those thresholds before they even come forward for a conditional use.
Any real estate transaction, it's gotta be in writing if it's over a thousand dollars. Somebody says, or hope, or praise, or whatever, that doesn't, that, that's not a legal binding thing for anybody. So people buy real estate based on, hope something's gonna change, it's like going to Las Vegas. Every time I go out to Las Vegas, I'm always come back hitchhike home. I don't win anything. So you got, people gotta be careful what, when they get word from anybody, that it's just words, and there's rules on that. Real estate transactions, uh, there's no way in the world that I would buy a piece of real estate property based on a possibility, uh, even if it's put in writing. Yes, sir, sure. Well, you just don't, you just don't buy the property.
Who does a resident of San Angelo go to to try to stay within the legal area that, to, to, to request this type of information? I didn't go to a neighbor. I didn't go to, to my, my coworker. I went to the city.
I know, and they said possibly, and that, that they were, we were hoping, board was that they'd give some wiggle room on the five hundred feet. He just explained they did not.
Correct.
And so-
And we kept calling and-
That's where our problem is, and you were hoping they would, and they didn't, but you purchased the property.
Yes.
And that you put yourself in the dilemma by possibly or hoping or whatever that those rules would be changed. The city didn't put you in that dilemma. They tried to work on it and get it done.
Right.
It didn't change. He explained what did change, but they didn't change the five hundred feet. We've been having all kinds of problems with the five hundred feet. Do you measure it as a crow flies and point to point? Do you follow the street to get to the five hundred feet? Do you go to the closest property pin? With, all kinds of different things. And it's, uh, they, sounds like councils kept it at the five hundred feet. The short-term rental is the reason there's so much, uh, turmoil or, uh, is it's, there's a lot of variables. It's been a problem. It's a problem not only in San Angelo, it's a problem everywhere that has short-term rentals. And they set this a stat, this deal at five hundred feet, they're, that's the rule, and it didn't change.
I understand, and I understand that it's a new business model. But at the end of the day, you know, there's, there are advance and technology, and there's new business models that will come up. I have a full-time, my husband and my, and myself, we have full-time jobs. We make enough money to have an extra, not a lot, to open a huge business, but to invest in this community. I've been living here for the last ten years. My kids are being raised here. I want to continue investing in San Angelo. And having these conversations, you know, you talk with coworkers, colleagues, and they ask about, how's that, uh, business doing? And we try to encourage them to keep their money, invest in our community, to see growth and see, and see, and see- And see, and see, and see that, but it's become so hard and it's-
I hear you, but there's regu- there's regulations everywhere.
I'm sorry, I was still talking. And it breaks my heart that my colleagues much rather go out to Austin and other, other areas within Texas to invest instead of keeping that same money here for our communities. These STRs, they're employing local people, we have a local, completely family, that's, that's the full family that comes and takes care of maintaining the property. We have a local, we have Buggah Express, we're hiring local contractors to keep up, so it generates more business for our community. So I, I, that's why I don't understand why it's so hard for somebody to try to just build a small business. And they're called STRs or bed and breakfast, they're businesses, they're little businesses.
Well, what you did was speculate, and you didn't win on that part of it. They didn't, they did not change the 500 feet, you were speculating, here we are.
Sir, I was not speculating, I inquired the people that would tell me-
It was called speculation, it was what you did.
So I, I spoke with speculating people and trust their word.
They had rules in place. You were familiar with the rules. You had two other properties. They told you things could, might, maybe change- with this property that you liked. Probably priced right and everything that would work for you, didn't meet the current rules. So the current rules did not change. The 500 feet is still there. In the meantime, you bought the property, so you were speculating that the rules were changed.
So you're suggesting that for investors that are trying to put their money here in San Angelo, we should halt, we should go, we should go ahead and halt our businesses and halt, halt their investments?
Yeah, I think-
Public comment.
Anybody except this case. I'm not exp- and, uh, you know, there's rules, you come in as an investor and you follow the rules, they're the rules. If you wanna speculate and buy it under a condition that the rules might change, that's speculation. Plain and simple.
We can say speculation, we can say, we can say impression, interpretation, we can say all of the above. I think, and I, my, my, my response to that is, is while I completely understand where you're coming from, I think we all had that same impression that that was going to change. I've been in that similar boat. The only issue is, is that by making an exception to that, to this one specific rule, it opens up the doorway to make, continue to make those exceptions to anyone that wants to be 100 feet, which then takes out the 500 feet out the window.
I, I do see that and I'm, I'm not, I'm not being, I'm not trying to be special here, but I, I, I would think if there's other residents here in San Angelo that are under the same situation that I have been, where they have previously tried to done this correctly, approached the city and not just, when I have, uh, never approached the city, never paid taxes, never did anything, they should also have, you know, some grace.
You make a great argument, trust me, you, you really do. My only concern too, and I think, cause we've all seen this, is that if we even were to approve it today, you still would have to go another step, to another board.
Right, and I would do it, like we done with the other properties. And I, and I get that, I get that, I understand and I will respect that. That's why I'm requesting an exception for this property.
No more comments?
Two big questions.
Don? Any questions? Thank you. Any more public comment? There being none, I'm gonna close public comment. Right, board, talk about it.
From, for my part- For my part, I'm glad the city at least clarified it, I think they made the wrong decision. This whole STR thing came about when STRs were new and everybody was kinda panicked about it. I think if you look at that overhead picture in there, the, 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 the house in the picture has about seven cars parked in and around the yard. And I think if you have a, a lower, lower price rental in a lower income area, an STR is gonna be a much nicer house, much better kept up. And so I don't think that they're the devil in the same way that, that others apparently do. Anyway, having said all that, if the rule is clear now, maybe we won't have to talk about it every time. But I think in this case, there was a lot of gray area in her, her deal, and I would be in favor of, of not, not approving the denial, uh, for that reason. And I understand, I, I can tell how this is gonna go, but, uh, it just seems, all these people that have come to us in the short term, I've been here, it seems kind of unfair the way there wasn't clarity about this. And so now there is, if you're gonna buy a house tomorrow, you know what the rule is, these guys did not. And, uh, so I, I, that would seem like exactly what we're supposed to do.
And I a hundred percent agree with you, one hundred percent on that. That would be my only concern, is that they continue to go down to the steps, get more permits, go in front of another meeting. There's a lot of investors that will end up purchasing a home and they just sit on it, and they're paying for it, for it to sit there, and then ultimately, it doesn't get approved. And then it just got another waiting game. I, I'm, I, I think it was very gray for Alayon.
And, uh, to, uh, board, I just wanna remind you, so this is the, the last case that would be variable for distance. We have changed our process so they're not having to sit and wait. Uh, we do talk with them and get them to get an application that day when they come in, that's why we tell them, come in, we're not going, we're not gonna take an application or give recommendations over the phone. They will sit down immediate with the, the, um, with planning. They also sit down with building permits to schedule the inspection for the next day or two. So within a day or two, they're out there doing the inspection. And if something fails there, they don't even go to a board at that point. So they, they are doing that early and very quickly, especially if there are investors, uh, that are looking. We encourage them, come to the city first, and we always encourage them to, if you're going to invest in property, make it contingent on getting an approval, just like several folks do that with our zoning. They, they know two or three months in advance that it's gonna take 90 days for a zoning case, they make that contingent on the offer. So we encourage that. Now, I will say, residential real estate might be a little bit different than commercial, so we understand that. I think our staff is now taking very high pride in making better communication with the public about what's going on with short-term rentals. We are about to have a, a new website for short-term rentals for all of our public to go and see what the rules are, how they're supposed to come into compliance, as well as what they need to do. In one way, this is a step in coming into compliance, if they were out there operating. This is a, a one way to come into compliance, in her case, there happens to be a distance variance. Then they still have to get that conditional use, um, on a separate topic, but sh- still with short-term rentals, we have worked very hard this last, uh, few months, the city has, uh, through finance, uh, building permits, as well as planning, and they have secured over double digits new short-term rentals coming into compliance that were out of compliance. And so I, I hear her words of, there's folks out there not doing it right and they're not coming to the city at all. And that's, that is very unfortunate, but we are working to get those folks to come into compliance. We are working very, very hard for that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the variance for this property, and with the understanding that it will move forward, that it is the last one of the previous rules. That's my motion.
I'd like to second that motion.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Okay, we'll go for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move on to the next one.
Is it six oh?
Six zero.
Okay, thank you.
Good motion. Item number five. ZBA 24-13, 301 East Washington Drive, single member district number three, Harry Thomas, a request for approval of a variance from zoning ordinance section 501A for a five-foot front yard setback in lieu of the 25-foot along Metcalf Street in our M1 zoning district. Mr. Reed?
Austin Reed, planner, so this comes to you out of the Fort Concho neighborhood. It is district three, Harry Thomas's district, you can tell we're right across from Fort Concho Elementary School. Uh, this is an RM1 lot, an empty RM1 lot, where we're looking to build a, a single-family residence. Uh, the request is for a five-foot front yard setback variance off of Metcalf Street. We mailed out 17 notifications, did not receive any responses. Onto our analysis, so this is a double frontage lot at minimum width is 50 feet wide, uh, which means we don't have very much buildable area to begin with. This is where it gets a little bit tricky, but the Metcalf frontage has a 25-foot setback. Normally, we would consider this to be five-foot, because when we have an alleyway behind a double frontage lot, we really like to only count one frontage. Um, if I go back, you can see, there is actually an alleyway behind it, but this is an alley right-of-way. It's a functioning alleyway, but it's not technically an alleyway. So that distinction prevents the Metcalf frontage, um, from being five feet, now it has to be 25 feet technically.
Why is that? Was it technically not, wasn't recorded?
Why that's not an alleyway, I'm not sure.
Correct, all those are still platted as private property, that's been functioning as an alleyway, it's just platted as private property. And that's just, uh, as you know, Chairman Cortez, double frontages are always one of the challenging things that we have in our ordinance, and we hope to look at that in the future. But this one, in this case, where it shows that the private property still actually butts up against each other, is not technically an alley.
So it's like, it's like across the street, property line?
Yes, sir.
Interesting.
And you said the remainder-
I've never run across that.
Yeah.
The other properties surrounding it all have, technically have a five-foot setback right now, currently.
On their side setbacks, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Though additionally, the, uh, the requirement of a 25-foot, uh, setback here would be unusual for the area if you go up and down the same street in the vicinity. Not a whole lot of other houses are actually abiding by that 25-foot. So here's sort of, uh, a concept plan and a photo of the site. You can see the concept plan does list that setback off of Metback to be, off of Metcalf to be 10 feet. The applicant says he's flexible at either measurement, but he is asking for the five feet, so. So if staff finds all necessary criteria and granting a variance can be met, we think that granting a variance is a minimum action that will make use of the land, it's not contrary to public interest and would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance. And so we are recommending approval, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, Mr. Reed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Open for public comment? Doesn't look like there's any, okay, if I'm closed, public comment, board commentary?
Make a motion to a parent.
And I'll second, or whoever. Or all third, all fours, all fifths, all sixes.
All right, I have a motion, uh, a motion and a second, we'll go for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, pass the si- six zero. Item number six. A request, uh, ZBA 24-14, 2808 Coleman Street, single member district number two, Tom Thompson, a request for approval of variance from section 501-
Read the second one too, we're gonna put them both together, there's lots next to each other.
Oh, you want me to read both of them together?
Yes, please.
So we can vote them together, it's the same thing. Knocked two out.
Let me, uh, request for approval of, of a variance from section 501 to allow for a 20-foot yard setback in lieu of the required 25 feet and a 16-foot rear yard setback in lieu of the required 20. We'll go to item number seven, gonna combine the two. ZBA 24-15, 2804 Coleman Street, single member district number two, Tom Thompson, a request for approval of a variance from section 501 to allow for a 20-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required 25 feet and a 16-foot rear yard setback in lieu of the required 20 feet. Ditto, Mrs. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can tell, th- this is reflected in both, uh, 2804 and 2808. They're two lots that are side by side, they were platted at the same time in 1927, and they were platted at the distance that they are now. The site is in Angelo Heights, it's in district three, Tom Thompson's, it's RS1. The, each one of them has two variances that they're requesting, it is the backyard variance and the front yard variance, and as I indicated, they are exactly the same. We sent out 26 notifications, we received zero in favor and zero opposed. Looking through the analysis, as I indicated, the lots were legally platted in August 19th of 1927. The requirement is in that area for a 25-foot front yard setback. They are requesting 20 because they are intending on building a 1600, a little over 1600 square foot home. That is not a large home, it will fit on those lots if in fact you grant the variance of both the front and the back. The lots were platted at 92 by 100. Granting the variance, staff believes, believes will not have an adverse effect on the surrounding properties. There are others that have developed over time that are about that same size. And a couple of other lots were combined together so that the people had their, a lot that met the requirements. It's a transitional area, it's an infill development. And so, given all of that, um, staff believes that granting the variance is the minimum action that would allow those lots to reasonably be, uh, used in this day and age for a house that is, uh, comparable to most of the average homes that are built. And so with that, staff is recommending approval of the requested variances from section 501A of the zoning variance to allow the front yard variance from the required 25 feet to 20.5 or, or 20 feet, and the rear yard setback of 16, 2.5 inches instead of the 20-foot required. And then staff has one condition, in that the building permits will be applied for within one year to ensure the, ensure the existing condition becomes the norm for those two lots. And one of the building permits has already been applied and, and actually two may have been. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Bailey? Thank you. Open for public comment?
I'm Colin McCrory, the developer of these lots, and, um, in 2019, I had the same variance approved with the same setbacks. There's properties that, on the same block, let's see here, 2830 Coleman, uh, let's see, 2830 Coleman, 2902 Coleman, 2630 Coleman, all same lot dimensions, all similar houses. Uh, these will be 1,271 square foot, up 220,000. Just kind of the houses that are going in that area, they're in line with, with everything in that neighborhood, and I don't think it's anything new to the neighborhood, so that's what I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Jamal Shumpert, single member district number three, uh, surprisingly, again, this guy's already applied for a variance. We know it's 5,000 square foot to build a home, he's a developer. I don't think he did his due diligence or he was promised this variance. I'm, I'm not sure how things are working around here, you guys.
Can you repeat that, sorry, I didn't understand when you said 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's, it's an ordinance for 5,000 square feet to build a home, uh, and-
No.
There's no ordinance here for that?
No, he was asking for an ordinance to-
No, no, I'm, what you're, what I'm clarifying is, the minimum lot size for San Angelo is 5,000 square foot.
No, sir.
Is it not? Is it not? Mr. Cortez?
Depends on the zoning, uh-
Okay, so-
Depends on the area of the zoning.
The lots, uh, it's 5,000, 150 by 100.
So, so in, it, being a developer, I'm not a developer, I'm, I'm just like you, I wouldn't notice had I not read. Uh, but I read, and I understand that it's 5,000 square foot to build a lot, and he purchased those lots this year. How would he purchase a lot? Just like you told the woman with the STR, with the understanding that it's less than 5,000 square foot, he's gonna go straight here to get a variance, he knows it's approved.
Well, if he loses it, if he loses it, he can build one house on those two lots.
And what makes, actually what makes more sense, you're right, is to replat it into one.
We, we, we go through the 50 by 100, we get variances on that all the time.
Yeah. It's, it's a lot of different variances.
I might be able to offer some clarity just a little bit. So as, uh, Ms. Bailey mentioned, these were platted in 1927, they have vested rights from 1927 for that lot size. We cannot require him to replat since- We cannot require him to replat since they're currently platted lots. And so, since they were platted before the zoning ordinance in 2000 that took effect that said you must have a minimum lot size of 5,000, he's already vested rights leaving it at that 92 by 100, so we can't require him to do that. Now, the things that he is required is that he should have to fit a house within the current zoning ordinance setbacks of 20 feet for the rear yard setback and 25 feet for the front yard setback. But the reality is, that makes a much smaller house. It's not marketable at this time in our community, and so we have to also look at variances to be marketable at this time for that lot to be developed. It makes so much more sense for our community that the services are already being provided to that lot, their police and fire are already driving by that lot, is to do infill things to allow that property to become developed. In doing so, recommending for approval for this variance is what our staff has done.
So that means what he said is it's a merely financial thing because it's not marketable. What he did not...
He got into a subject called vested rights.
Yeah, vested rights. That, we can't require him to do that. You're right. We don't have to also give him an ordinance. And he also does understand that it is 5,000 square foot to build a lot. That is something, you know, when he purchases it, that's the due diligence I'm talking about, before he ever makes it here. So that's what I'm looking at from outside in. I'm seeing people who not following the rules, basically coming to you guys, saying, hey, I mean, this variance is approved, 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 all the time.
You're not comparing apples to apples when you talk about the previous case. That was a short-term rental. This is a vacant lot.
Well, it is...
No, it's not. You're reaching.
The due diligence is apples to apples.
But you get into vested rights. I hear where you're coming from. You have a good argument, but you're not comparing apples to apples.
Are you sure?
This is completely different, yes.
Because he did his due so, his due diligence.
Excuse me, for just a second, we're getting into discussion back and forth when this is really public comment.
Right.
So it's for Mr. Schumpert.
Yeah, I was interrupting, Mr. Dawson.
Right, you can give your comment. So it's for Mr. Schumpert to give his comment to the board within the time limits, and that's it. I mean, we shouldn't be doing this back and forth.
Yeah, I'll make this statement and then I'll go back because I got other statements to make. The due diligence that's done amongst these developers and amongst these people applying for your, your applications is not happening. It's not happening. And it's making you guys look bad and it's making the staff look terrible when someone like me comes up and has to tell you this. It does. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments.
More public comment? Be an unclosed public comment. Go to...
Make a motion to present, to approve as presented.
And I'll second that.
Motion to approve and a second.
And could you clarify if that's both cases?
Yes, sir. On 2808 Coleman and 2804 Coleman.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Good. More comment? Let's go to the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, six, zero. Item number eight, ZBA 24-17, 600 Era Street, single member district number three, Harry Thomas. A request for approval of four variances, a lot size of 91 feet by 78, a front yard setback of 15 feet instead of the required 25 feet on both Era and Fulton, and a front yard setback of 15 instead of the required 25 feet on Fulton, 1418 Fulton Street.
Good afternoon, Ray Limeberry Planner.
Hello. This is Limeberry.
I also passed out a sketch of the preliminary plat involving this case. So this one is on 600 Era Street and 1418 Fulton Street. There is total of four variances. They're asking for, on the front lot that is facing Era Street, the lot size will be smaller. It'll be 91 by 78. The front yard setback off of Era Street would be 15 foot instead of 25. And then because, once the plat is done, the one on Era's, facing Era Street, will have a double frontage, so they're also asking for a 15-foot setback in lieu of the 25-foot front setback off of Fulton. And then that house behind them, that will be its own lot, is requesting also a front yard setback of 15 foot instead of 25 there off Fulton. We did mail out 24 notices. We received zero in favor, zero in opposition. So this area has not been platted, so by doing a plat, he's trying to come into compliance and, and make it two lots. So both of those houses have been there for more than 80 years. It's, it's kind of a making the plat fit what's currently there. It is the same owner at the moment, but he's wanting to sell off one of the lots, which is why he would like to plat, and, and plating would require these variances. So staff does believe that it would not have an adverse effect of the surrounding area. I might go back one more. If you've noticed, a lot of the other homes in the area are, are similar as far as how far away they are from that front property line there off Era Street. And, let's see, I didn't have the plat at the time, so I printed it off. That is just a sketch of the preliminary plat, but I did try to do a picture to show you about where the property line would be between the two houses. So we, again, staff believes that it's the minimum action that will make use of the land. So staff is recommending approval of all four variances. And with that, if there's any questions?
Any questions?
User error over here, sorry. My, so my main question would be is if that front lot were to be approved, I know that they were talking about selling it, possibly doing something else with it. Are those, are those, and I think I maybe asked myself this already, but if the house were to be torn down, is that whoever purchases that, they're going to have to come back in and get all new variances? Because that's kind of a tiny lot to have those specific setbacks.
No.
So that's what you're already including in that with it changed?
It will be included with the plat.
So it will move forward if someone else purchases it?
Yes, it goes with the land. Correct.
Well, the variances would allow for a building to come back to that same footprint. If they wanted to do something larger, they may have to come back for a different variance, but these variances would memorialize that lot size and that current structure. And then if you stayed on the same footprint, you would be legalized. Now, they'd be able to build back further back to the back fence. I don't know if that's more than 20 feet or not, or to the side fence, but the front lot side, the front lot, front yard setback from Era Street and the one from, is that Fulton Street?
Mm-hmm.
Those would be set at, through these variances.
So is that alley a real alley?
Yes, well...
It is a real alley.
It is a real alley.
That's a great question, though.
After the last question, last case.
That's a good question. And they are trying to come into even more compliance. This area is RS1, and so they really are trying to make these two RS1 lots as opposed to two residential living structures on one RS1 lot. So they're trying to come into more compliance this way.
Any more questions? Thank you. An open for public comment?
I'm Jack Downey from SKG Engineering. Thank you for hearing our case today on behalf of Revity. I think they, I think they've explained it pretty well. I'll just answer any questions y'all might have if I can.
Nope, getting out easy.
Pardon?
You're getting out easy.
Thank you so much.
Any more public comment? Unclosed public comment. Board?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve as presented. Second? Motion as a second, in discussion? Being none, let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Being none, six, zero. Item number eight, ZBA 24-18, 4738 Wolf Creek Drive, single member district number one, Tommy Hebert. A request for approval of a variance from section 501 of the zoning ordinance to allow for a six-foot rear yard in lieu of a required 20 foot, 20 feet.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Vanoy.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman Cortez. Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is a case at 4738 Wolf Creek. You can see it there outlined in red. As you can tell, this overhead is, is old because there are some houses that are built in, particularly on Carston Creek. That was when they were putting in, you can see where they came in and started putting in things for Carston Creek, but that, that block is already built out and significant amount of Wolf Creek has been built out. So this is a request for a variance for a rear yard setback, and this area back here is what we'll kind of focus on when we move forward on a few of the other slides. Let's go ahead and move forward. So here's the notifications. We did send out 16 notifications. We did have another one right here that came in this morning for right there and right there in favor. So we had three in favor and zero opposed to this to grant a variance for the rear yard So we did do the analysis. The home is built a little bit further back than the 25-foot front yard setback, and so if this actually had the houses on it, it's actually built further back this way. And that's because Wolf Creek right through here is a minor collector that goes through, and so the developer instead pushed those back just a little bit more to where these on this side are, are right up at the 20-foot rear yard setback. These other lots are slightly larger by about five feet, and they had a little bit more room to wiggle on additions. So adjacent property design designated was, was designed to be an unbuildable detention pond for the entire Bentwood master neighborhood. Attached to this, this product, this one is going to be attached to the structure, making it part of the primary structure. It's very open, and the style, pitch, and slope and materials are consistent with the home structure in our analysis. So here you have just kind of the, the blown-out view. This down here is Wolf Creek, and of course, back here is where that detention is. And I've got a zoomed in to show you right back here. They have an open porch that's going to be coming off. It's only enclosed right here where they have an outdoor fireplace, but this entire area is open except the two posts right there, and they've got a, just slightly over a six-foot distance from their rear property line. So here's that, some elevations that they provided. You can see that it is a relatively open structure, but they have matched the roofline, materials, color, dimensions, and everything. We believe that they have met all the necessary criteria in granting the variance. This is the minimum action that would be needed, and it is not contrary to the public interest. It is consistent with the neighborhood, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the variance for the zoning ordinance for a six-year, six-foot rear yard setback in lieu of the required 20 feet under the following conditions. They obtain all necessary building permits and inspections and the structure to remain substantially open in nature for the three walls. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Who is the builder?
I believe it's Tuck and Company. Mr. McMahon was the applicant. That's not the property owner, but that's the contractor that's doing this addition. The home already exists. This is just an addition to the home.
Aaron, is this part of Bentwood?
Yes, it is.
Do they approve this type of stuff? Didn't we have one of these before where the HOA was...
I believe they have an HOA or an Architectural Standards Board, but we don't, there's no binding on the city. That's for them to work out in a civil case. If they don't, we don't even ask that question when they come in, just like with the lake properties. We don't ask if the lake HOA has approved those or not. As long, we, we only look at our zoning ordinance.
So if there is, that their ordinance that they have, though, in place prevents this from being built even if we give permission through the city?
Then the HOA overrides that.
The HOA owners.
That, that's up to them.
No, I'm stating a fact.
Okay.
That wasn't a question.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
So, do, we haven't, you haven't asked?
No.
If they have that in place?
No, I, I have not asked. I know that they applied for a permit. I didn't see it in the permitting documents. Sometimes contractors submit that as part of their permitting documents, and we upload it as well in the review. I don't remember it there. I'm not sure if the applicant is here today or not to speak, but they could probably speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Aaron. Open it up for public comment?
Hello, everyone. My name's Travis McMahon. I own Tuck and Co. I did apply for the variance. When we initially started this, we, I told them that this would probably be an issue. My first process was to go to the HOA, the Architecture Committee of Bentwood, and I do have approval for that. Second process, once I had that, have a design which I provided, bring it to the city, and then see if we could get a variance.
You got approval from the HOA?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Y'all have a copy of that? Okay.
We don't request one because we're not, we don't need one, but, yeah.
Yeah, I could absolutely provide that. I mean, I've built full, full homes in Bentwood as well, so we send all of our plans to an architectural committee. They approve it first, prior to me even trying to get a permit, because it was just, it's just...
Sure. Make sure you had a copy of it so neighbors can complain.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right, any questions?
Glad you're doing it the right way.
I'm sorry?
Happy you're doing it the right way.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Any more public comment? There being none, unclosed public comment. All right, board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? Have a motion to approve and a second. We want to discuss it, we'll go to the vote. So, no discussion? Let's go to the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass is six, zero. Second page. You done?
Done.
All right. Item number 10, Division Report.
Yes, sir, Chairman. We don't have a lot to report on today. We do think we were going to have possibly one case. I know Friday was the deadline, and we're just double checking to make sure everything happens, and I think Austin Reed was going to check with everybody because July the first is the Monday in July, or it's, what's the next, is it July the eighth?
July the eighth.
I don't know how to add seven to one.
Starting the Fourth of July early, are you?
I guess so. Yes, sir. So the question would be to the board, do we have enough people for either of those dates, and is there a date that works better than either one? Even if we just have one case, it is, it's to the applicant's advantage to have it heard.
Just one case, I can be here the first, but I am not here the following Monday.
I'm the same.
I can be here.
So July first is probably the best date out of that?
If it's, yeah. Just one case.
And other than that, I just want to compliment our, our city staff. They are working very hard. They've been doing their due diligence, particularly on cases like this. I would say zoning board of adjustment is our most difficult because we are really making very tough decisions. Not that the other decisions aren't tough, but we know that in certain cases, we're going to make recommendations that don't always make common sense sometimes, but we're, we are bound by following our ordinance, and I just want to keep encouraging them to continue to do their job well. I do think there are some things in our zoning ordinance that we do need to tackle in the next year, and so if there's some, some feedback from you guys over time of saying, hey, we really need to address those things, whether it's double frontage or whatever it may be, we would like to know that because anything like that helps us get better for our community, and we are here to help serve our community and do the best we can for them.
Very good. Very good.
I would just say quickly in response to that, I appreciate the fact that you guys are trying to make some of this work, and I know I'm coming down as against what you're doing, but it's obvious in this case that you all tried hard to make things that made sense work on behalf of the citizen, which I think is what we should all be doing, so[1786.23] thank you.
Let's not skip a month and not have such a long agenda. Yeah, please. Alright, public comment, item number 11. I have to read this. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dice, and begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number. Please limit all remarks to less than three minutes.
Jamal Shumpert, single-member district number three. I'm pretty sure a lot of y'all are wondering. Y'all have never seen me before. Why am I here today? I'm here because at the planning commission, April 16, someone suggested that you change the zones in the lower-income neighborhoods so that you can allow more short-term rentals, instead of, to subvert the 500-foot distance. That brought me into all of what the city is doing, and I'm not happy. Honestly, I'm kind of ashamed that you guys, not all of you guys, some of you guys are here trying to make a difference, but a lot of the things that I'm seeing, that's actually on the record books, they're disturbing, and it shows that there's partnerships outside of people. I mean, partnerships outside of here, that conversations within these chambers slip outside of the chambers, outside of the people who are our trusted public officials. I just watched a guy who was a developer come up here and have all of his ducks in a row. Most of y'all applicants that come up here do not have their ducks in a row, because they're, like the woman from the S T R said, they're being guaranteed or being given some type of agreement that, hey, we'll slide by this ordinance by this. That's not what their job is. Their job is to follow the ordinance, and sometimes, some things just don't work. Like, trying to make everything work, sometimes it just doesn't work. Thank you.
Alright, item 12, next meeting agenda. Think we've already talked about that?
Yep.
Do I need to read it?
Mm-hmm, for the minute.
The next regular meeting, zoning board adjustments, is scheduled to begin at 1:30 PM on Monday, July 1st, 2024, in the City Hall East Mezzanine Meeting Room, unless advised otherwise. About that and that. Item number 13, adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.